According to my watch, it's now 6:00 PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Can we have the roll call, please, Chris?
Mr. McConnell?
Here.
Mr. Heidemann?
Here.
Mr. Bone?
Here.
Commissioner Dunn? Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Mr. Greathop?
Here.
Commissioner Tamian?
Here. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Do we have any additions, deletions, or changes to the human service agenda this evening?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented. Support?
Do you want to add?
Oh, okay. Oh, good, good. I'd like to add, make an addition. I was going to do that under the Agreement of Service Matters. I would like to make an addition, an appointment to the Commission on Aging of Diane Cooper. And you have her shortened bio here.
Thank you.
Seconded, Dan.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that will be new business, item B. Any other changes, additions, deletions to the agenda? If not, this is the time every meeting that we provide for citizens who would like to comment to the board. Are there any citizens here tonight that would like to share their comments with us? Seen no volunteers? Let's proceed. Are there any updates on human service matters? I guess I have an update, but does anybody else have one? Mr. Greathop?
I'll just share with you that I did my annual, or biannual, whatever it is, address at the Washington Life Center this morning. The people called me and asked me to come down there and speak to the people. You have to be, it's an interesting group. They're all retirees, they're all seniors, they're all pretty active seniors, and they're right on top of a lot of things. But they eat at 11:30. And if you're not done talking by about 11:20, you might as well give it up because they're starting to squirm in their seats and getting ready to eat. So you gotta, you gotta know how to do it. But we talked about a lot of things going on at the county. One of the resources that we have as commissioners, obviously, would be administration, and Kerry helped me with a couple of ideas there. The other resource that we have is our fellow commissioners. And I thought, who better to call than Carl, because Carl heads up that particular committee and all about the Commission on Aging. And I shared the numbers, Carl gave me some numbers that happened Tuesday night with some additional money that's going to be spread around. And these people were just ecstatic when they heard that number. $338,000 for council on aging. Yeah, and they were just, they were just ecstatic over that. So don't forget to call on each other to get some help if you need things. So just wanted to share that with you.
Well, I was actually planning to go over those specific figures in summary this evening. Is there anybody else that has anything for us? As you're aware, we have a senior citizen millage. Commission's placed it on the ballot. It's passed overwhelmingly for several years. In fact, when we had a significant loss in property taxes as a result of the Great Recession, a proposal was made to increase that millage, and that passed overwhelmingly. And I don't think everybody in our county really realizes how unique this is. If you look across southeastern Michigan, if you look at McComb, Washtenaw, Oakland, Wayne Counties, none of them have a program like this. They get the federal aid that we get, but they don't have these programs. They really rely on foundations and nonprofits to assist them with their services. And despite the fact that we've been able to increase our millage with the Great Recession, we're still facing some significant issues. One of them is that while in Lansing and Washington DC, the federal aid to seniors has remained the same, the number of seniors that are retiring every year is growing astronomically. There's a baby boomer bubble coming through, and that's probably going to continue for 10 years. So if you took a look at it from the perspective of amount of federal aid or state aid per senior citizen, every year it's declining, not because the appropriations are, but because the number of eligible citizens are increasing. And we passed our additional millage, but one of the problems we all know, because it's something that we face in our own budget, is that with Proposal A and the Headley Amendment, the caps that they've placed on increasing values, we will not get back to the values that we were at in 2007 for 15 to 20 years. And that affects senior citizens. Finally, a really unique problem that we've been facing, and I represent the county as a Human Service Committee Chair on the Council on Aging, on the Commission on Aging, and on AAA-1B in Detroit. But within our county, one of the problems that many of our agencies that are funded through the senior citizen millage have is that there's a great demand now for skilled and unskilled healthcare workers. And we're not, have not been able, and across these agencies, to increase compensation. And as a result, we have many unfilled positions in senior services, which is a challenge to many of our providers. So with the leadership of the Commission on Aging, which is really a group that you appoint to administer those, the senior citizen millage, they have been working with all the agencies in the last year to try and address those problems. And they came up with what I thought was a very innovative idea, and that was to offer them a carrot, a one-time 10% increase in their appropriation if they could come up with programs that would help address these issues that I just spoke of. And they have been meeting with these agencies over the past year, and they've been talking about not just increasing their appropriations, but how they can work smarter together through quality management, cooperation, to try and reduce their cost and provide better services to the seniors. As a result of that, at our meeting Wednesday night, there were several of the agencies that the Commission has made a recommendation receive additional funding. Those include Catholic Social Services that provide counseling services to seniors. Their, the recommendation is that they would receive $127,000 more dollars a year. Safe Horizons, that provides emergency shelter for seniors who lost their homes. Their appropriation would be increased $32,000. Lakeshore Senior Citizen Legal Assistance would help seniors that have legal problems, wills, estates, healthcare issues. Their appropriation would be increased by $26,000. Funding for the County Public Guarding was increased by $16,000. Visiting Nurses, a key service, was increased by $37,000. And Programs Provided by the Council on Aging was expanded by $332,000. And I just thought that that was a very interesting initiative by one of our boards and commissions that's been working really hard to fulfill the senior citizen mission, and I just wanted to share that with all of you this evening. You should be receiving a formal report from them at a subsequent meeting. Commissioner Rushing?
Just one humorous thing, and now that I've reached the advanced age of 60, I got my absentee, I guess that's a requirement for municipalities to send you a notice that I can be a permanent absentee ballot voter. So I got that in my mouth. I'm still going to go vote.
Why are you looking at me when you talk about that?
Well, Dave, now, you didn't misunderstand that. You still have to attend to Commission meetings. I mean, there are many of us that are over 60 here, and just because we're over 60,
Three quarters of my board.
We can't vote absentee.
Thought I'd have a little reminder.
But, thank you. Are there any other comments? All right. Now that I've covered other human service matters, is there anything for information only?
You mean conceptual initiatives?
Conceptual initiative. I get back up here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped ahead. All right, so now we're at conceptual initiatives. Kerry, I, Carol, sorry to skip over you.
None tonight.
All right. We have no old business, we have new business. We have, item 7A is a Community Mental Health Board Appointment.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we send the name Lori Ames to the full board for position on the Boards and Commission with a term expiring 3/31/2019.
Support? I have a question. Did we ever receive an application?
No, I did actually send you an email, but it was later. This one was a little bit odd in that Mr. Ames did not actually send us the resignation either. He sent it directly to CMH. CMH forwarded it to me.
Oh, okay.
And then asked that he be replaced by his wife. So from the time that they sent me the notice of resignation, I didn't have time to get anything from her. But she does meet the service population that's receiving services, which is one of the requirements for their board.
So with our mo-
Get one between now and the full board if you'd like.
That's what I was going to ask. If that would be possible to get that, then I think the motion, as I understand it, is to send it on to the full board. So if we could get, I raised this with Chris. I said, you know, it looks to me like we're just taking the person who's resigned and appointing his spouse to represent us, and that's all the information that we got about it. And I thought that was kind of unusual. But as long as we can get it for the next meeting, I think that'd be fine.
Okay.
Commissioner Greathop?
Yeah, I did have a conversation with Mrs. Ames. Her husband has changed his job and is no longer able to serve. She's freed up some time, and they have a real interest in it. They have a special needs child, and they have a real interest in what goes on with the, with this particular thing. So he's quite anxious to get on it.
I did serve on the Community Health Board, and Mr. Ames was a very active participant and did a really good job as a board member. So if his wife has similar qualifications, I would certainly support her appointment. Thanks, Chris. So did we vote on that?
Not yet.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The next one is another appointment. This is Diane Cooper to the Council on Aging.
That's correct. She would represent my district. I apologize for getting her shortened resume out, but you can see that she brings a lot to the board in terms of background, working with senior citizens, and has an excellent background. So I would like to nominate her for the appointment for the district I represent on the Commission on Aging.
Was that a motion to send it to the full board?
Motion to send it to the full board.
Support? Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, let me see if I'm in the proper part of the agenda. Are there any other human service matters to come before the Human Service Committee? Hearing none? There is no information? Can I have a motion to receive and file the packets? Support? All those in favor?
Aye.
I move we adjourn.
Support? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Called order the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Judiciary Public Safety Committee meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Tamian?
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Here.
Mr. Bone?
Here.
Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Greathop?
Here.
Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda?
Motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Sec.
If we have motion in support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Are there any citizens to be heard? Seen none. Any updates? Conceptual initiatives?
None.
No old business. New business. 7A, the inmate mental health service agreement with CMH.
Mr. Chairman, I move that this agreement be sent on to the full board.
Second. We have motion in support. All in favor to send to the full board?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 7B, the 2016 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program Award for Final Action. This is a $12,302 grant. There is no match, and it's going to be used for in-car computers.
Motion to send that on to the full board.
This for final action.
For final action. All right. Motion to approve the 2016 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program Award for Final Action.
Support?
We have motion in support. Roll caller?
Commissioner Tamian?
Yes.
Mr. Heidemann?
Yes.
Mr. Bone?
Yes.
Mr. Rushing?
Yes.
Mr. Greathop?
Yes.
Mr. McConnell? Yes. Item 7C, Secondary Road Patrol Grant Application.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve, send on to the full board, rather, the secondary road patrol application. Support?
We have support, motion in support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item D, the Fiscal Year 2017 Traffic Enforcement Grant Application.
We do the secondary road.
Motion to send it on to the full board.
We have motion to send to the full board.
Support?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The 2017 Underage Drinking Grant.
We send that to the full board.
Support?
We have motion in support to send to the full board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Motorola Solutions Renewal. This is for annual contract. It's $26,540.40. It's a 3% increase over last year. Yes.
A question.
Question.
I'll move first that we send it on to the full board.
We send that to the full board.
To the board. Okay.
So, question.
Yeah, I'm just curious, you know, this goes to the cities. I see Marysville Port here on, you know, Clay Township, but, you know, they have police departments, Marine City, St. Clair. Why is Yale or KPEC not included in there? Do we have any idea?
Why they don't send it to them?
Yeah, why they don't get anything.
Are they not providing dispatch services? They may have police officers, but they're not-
But no dispatch? I think there's dispatch. I'm sure they-
Well, they all mean they're dispatch, but not by their own agency.
They don't have their own agency that's doing it?
Yale has one, don't they? Police Department?
Well, as well as KPEC, but they-
They're covered with KPEC.
Right.
Yeah. I was just curious when I saw that, and why those guys didn't qualify. And I'm sure there's a reason for it. I just don't know what it is.
I'm a lass. Is there anything else?
Oh, they don't have underage drinkers there, that's why.
I wouldn't think so.
Okay.
But I thought we were talking about the Motorola contract.
This is.
They're all connected.
That was interesting, but they're all connected.
It was a good prelude. So we have a motion in support. If there's no other questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Greenleaf Compaction Agreement for the Intervention Center. It's a new compactor at a cost of $13,500 to replace the old one. There is a savings of $25 a month for the service contract, which is going to be a $1,500 savings over the course of this.
Make the motion. Support?
We have motion in support. Send to full board. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 2017 Day Reporting Supervise, Supervision Agreement. This is the Huron House. $25,000 cost.
I'll move that that agreement be, contract be sent on to the full board. Support?
We have motion in support. Are there any questions? Seen none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 2017 Residential Substance Abuse Treatment Contract. This is a, is a fully funded grant with no match.
Motion to send it to the full board.
Second.
We have motion in support. Are there any questions? Seen none. Motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 7J, the Friend of the Court Office Renovation Agreement for beam construction for final action. This has come to us before, and it was bid out. And the contract is for $38,860. And I believe they want to get started right away.
Yeah, this is for final action. I would move it for final action. Support?
We have motion in support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, roll call.
Mr. Heidemann?
Yes.
Mr. Bone?
Yes.
Mr. Rushing?
Yes.
Mr. Greathop?
Yes.
Mr. McConnell?
Yes. Now, 7K is the District Court Office renovations in the amount of $25,000.
Motion to send it to the full board.
Support?
We have motion in support to send to full board. Anybody have any questions? Seen none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Are there any other judiciary public safety matters at this time from anyone? Yes, sir.
I had the opportunity yesterday to go out to Goodell's Park. Emergency Services brought in, the state police, to do a demonstration on their UAS, which is your unmanned aerial systems. They changed from UAV, which was a vehicle, now they're calling it S for system. And they did about a hour presentation, and he went over, the sergeant went over all of the information on how they got certified and what they're doing with it, what kind of things that they are doing with these drones, the cost of them, went over everything. It was really, really informative. Then took us out in the parking lot and did a little demonstration on it. It's probably the most sophisticated drone I've seen. He takes his iPad and he puts it in his hand, and he punches in a bunch of coordinates, and he draws a circle around something, and that drone takes off, and it's like a dog, invisible dog fence. That drone won't cross that line. When it gets to that line, it turns and it follows around in that circle, or it comes back. It does whatever it tells this thing to do. They're using it for a lot, for fire investigations, when you have a fire. And then you could do an aerial survey overhead, and you can look at that sort of stuff. They use it for tracking suspects if it's in a confined area, because that drone has only got about a 40-minute fly time, so they can't do a huge area. They would use a helicopter for that. But in a, they had a guy that got away into a cornfield, and so they sent the drone up, and he surveyed, and they found the guy laying down there, and they got the dog at the end of that, and he says, "That road dog, go get him." And the dog went and got him. So the drone does a lot of those types of things. They use it for some surveillance, they use it for automobile accidents, skid marks, and looking at everything from above. It's pretty fascinating, and these guys are working, there's two of them in the state. One in the Tri-Cities area and one in Lansing. And these guys are constantly on the run all over the state, going crazy. So I believe that our, Jeff Friedland is going to look and see if there's any grant money out there. These things are not cheap. You're looking at about $100,000 to buy the drone and to get the software. The software alone is 10 grand, about $1,000 a year to keep it going. So Jeff's going to see if there's anything out there. We're starting to talk about what kind of things can we do with a drone here at the county. Obviously, the sheriff could probably use one for a variety of things. Drain Commissioner could use that instead of trying to traipse through the woods to look at a drain, fly overhead and take a look and see what you got. You could shoot video, you could shoot stills, you could do all kinds of stuff with it. It comes back. Several people can look at it. You can use anything. So it's really in the infant stages right now. You can get certified to do countywide. The state police will come in and do it for you for the time being. But just sharing, it was, it was pretty fascinating stuff. It'd be the next technological piece that we have for doing services for the community.
I mean, emergency management, it makes sense. I know with State Farm, they've sent all their people down for this hurricane that's coming in, and they have the drone capability now.
Yes.
So as soon as they're ready, and everything's quadrant off, and the police have, you know, everything protected, they're not able to get in, they can send the drone in and start surveying the damage and find out what's going on before, so, you know, that gives them an idea how many people that they need to be in an area.
This one has the capabilities of running a grid pattern where you run up, back, up, back, up, back. You could take videos, take pictures, and then you could stitch all that stuff together and do a big piece. I know for a fact that Wayne Brissette has been looking at these things for two years for hazmat purposes. You get a, that barge that went down, and you had an oil spill, you know, looking at that stuff with a drone, probably a lot easier than, cheaper than bringing a helicopter out.
Sure.
So a lot of things that we can do with it. So I'm just kind of giving you a heads up that, someday maybe.
Good. Anybody else have anything?
Comes out of your budget, Greg.
Motion to receive and file?
I'll make a motion that we receive and file the packets as- Support?
We have motion to support. All in favor?
Aye.
Make motion to adjourn.
Support?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Environmental and Public Works Committee meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you take the role?
Mr. McConnell?
Here.
Mr. Tamian?
Here.
Mr. Bone?
Here.
Mr. Dunn?
Commissioner Rushing? Here.
Mr. Greathop?
Here.
Mr. Heidemann?
Here. At this time, I would, are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Tell move.
Been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Any citizens to be heard? Okay, we have Dan Casey.
Dan, excuse me, Dan Casey with the Economic Development Alliance. Since I had, I was here for a different item, but I thought I'd advise you on one thing. Recently, we've been working on a couple of projects. These would be greenfield development projects. And one of the projects required 10 acres of development-ready land. And we've been working with a real estate broker on this project. The particular location that they wanted to look at was really from St. Clair North to Port Huron, so they really didn't want to be in the southern part of the county or the western part of the county because of where their customer base was located. We had a very difficult time finding 10 acres of land that is development-ready. And the real estate broker's definition of that includes the site being cleared. So we have some land that has water and sewer and other utilities to it, but the sites aren't necessarily cleared. So I wanted you to be aware of that. Secondly, we're working on a larger project that's going to require about 25 acres of development-ready land. And again, the company wants to be in the Port Huron area, so they've said that the St. Clair Industrial Park is too far away, although they may have to circle back on that site just because of lack of land that's available. So again, I want to make you aware of that because this is restricting our ability to land some projects, particularly when there's a real estate broker who's experienced, who has other alternatives. For us to try to win those projects, it can be very difficult. I think the solution is to create a partnership between the county and the local community where some of these sites are located, and then develop plans to make those sites development-ready, in particular, land that's owned by a municipality. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention tonight. Thank you.
Any updates from commissioners?
I got a couple, Laurie Howard.
Okay.
Everybody here is familiar now with the DTE making their announcement that they're going to be building a gas-fired plant located next to the Bell River Power Plant in Chinatownship. They don't have a specific location right at this time. They just picked St. Clair County to put this plant, so you're going to hear in the next six months to, your timeframe as plans unfold. Dan Casey, myself, Larry Simons, Linda Schwanhafer, Bill Greathop, Kerry, who else was at that meeting? There was just a handful of us. Ron Chris from DTE. who else was at that meeting? There's just a handful of us. Ron Chris from DTE. They are going to be building a thousand megawatt facility by 2021. The St. Clair plant that is going to be coming offline somewhere in the, excuse me, 2023 timeframe. There's three different coal-fired plants that are scheduled for closure, St. Clair, River Rouge and Trenton. I just can't tell you how, A, excited that I am that they're rebuilding in St. Clair County. You know, and just, this is huge stuff. Anywhere's from one to 1.5 billion dollar investment. That's crazy big, right? So just good news, more to unfold, but they really, any of the commissioners that were in that room, Dan, very generic right now. We don't, you know, you always ask, you know, these, what were you building it, what you putting, what you doing? It's like, we can't tell you that. We just know that we're going to be, you know, rebuilding in St. Clair County. We have tremendous natural gas capabilities in that area and we have a lot of power line transmission things that were, you know, already in place from previous. So very, very positive news. I always say it's once in a lifetime. When I was four years old and we moved here, they were building the Bell River Plant, so maybe I'll see it twice in my lifetime that you get a power plant. Doesn't happen a lot. Any questions from any commissioners on the DTE?
I really don't have a question, but I'd just like to compliment our chairman who's really been taking the lead on these power plant issues and developed a very close working relationship between our county and DTE and I think that has served us well.
Yeah, they, you know, it's kind of funny. Randy Fernandez and I attended a meeting down in River Rouge. Power plants in some areas aren't quite as well-received, I guess for better lack of choice of words, you know, in St. Clair County. You look at everything that DTE, from tearing the plant, and we went and told our St. Clair County story because River Rouge is in the process, the early stages of tearing a plant down, you know, we talked about our experience in Marysville through the, you know, plant coming down to DTE, always being a very good corporate citizen, keeping us informed along the way. You know, there were some people that were at this meeting that were from other states and the experiences that the communities have had with their utility companies have not always been that favorable at all. And Consumers Powers was in attendance, too, and they had tore a plant down in Muskegon and the lady from Muskegon echoed the same thing. Consumer, great corporate citizen, you know, did everything they were supposed to, so on and so forth. So, you know, they've just, they've been, they've been great. They've been a great employer. Many of us have friends that work there that know people that work there. And so, you know, kudos to DTE.
Not just one question. You said it's going to be a thousand watt?
Maybe one.
Mega watt. How is that in comparison to the one that they're going to be tearing down?
St. Clair is twelve hundred. It's kind of interesting because at their peak capacity, DTE had thirteen thousand megawatts of power that essentially that they sold. When the economy went in the toilet, they went down to seventy-five hundred. They're at ten thousand currently. Between the three plants coming offline, Trenton's seven hundred or five hundred, give or take, either one's seven hundred, one's five hundred, I can't tell you reverse Trenton. But they're going to be removing roughly twenty-four hundred megawatts of power. They're going to be replacing with a thousand. They will, probably long-term, and I don't want to put words in my mouth, be looking for, you know, other, you know, expansions. Like anything, you got, you know, usage, things like that. Gas power plants aren't as large. They have a much smaller footprint than what a coal-fired. They don't employ as many people. Detroit Edison currently has roughly ten thousand employees, if I'm not mistaken, statewide. They assured, you know, via through attrition, you know, people will, you know, people that are working for DT are going to continue to be working for DT. So you're not going to have as many people working at that plant, but you're also not going to have a job loss. And we're talking, you know, five years plus and by time, let's face it, you ramp the other plant down, those types of things. But just, you know, just, man, great, great, great news for St. Clair County to be picked as the place for that.
That should keep our tax base pretty stable when you think about, you know, if you think about losing one plant and what you would lose in your tax base, but another one coming online at the same time, more than likely you'll even pick up some. I mean, 1.3 billion dollars in the plan.
I hate to say it, in the communities that are losing their power plants, it's, you know, when you're talking forty percent plus of your total, you know, you lose forty percent of your total tax base, what do you do? You know, you just don't, you don't replace those things, you know? I mean, it's just, that's how, that's how huge these things are in these communities. So good for us. I hate to say bad for the others, you know, but it's, you know, it's a big, you know, it's a big issue. We are in the process, we did receive, as you all know, that EPA grant and DT put up the monies. We received the grant, so some of the focus, Dan's going to be working with the, you know, DTE, the EDA, you know, the federal EDA stuff as far as different things that, different components that we're going to be looking at. We don't, we don't have anything yet to give that information to you, but we're going to be working, you know, more on that, too, as far as, you know, what needs to be in that study per se. It's obviously different for us now that we're getting the plant versus if we weren't getting the plant. The other thing I'm going to update on is Gary Peters, Bill Greathop, myself. Howard met Gary Peters today out at the landfill. Howard, do you want to chime in on that?
Well, obviously, this is really exciting to have a United States senator visit our landfill to check out our septage bioreactor out there. I don't know about your impressions, but I think he was really impressed with what we've got going on out there.
No question. He was impressed.
Yep.
And we, I think, gave him a few ideas to take back to Washington to help promote that technology throughout the United States. So pretty optimistic.
Yep.
Yeah, I think one of the things that truly impressed him was when he found out that we are the only one in the country that has the system working. He said, "You're the only one in the whole country?" He said, "In the whole country. We're the only one." He's taking pride in that and he's looking at that and he's thinking about that. And we also explained to him how, when Howard and I went there, to try to get our DDP sunset from twelve years to something better, which took us, what, four years, Howard?
Right.
And we got it to twenty-one years, but we would really like to see that go into some kind of a practice or best practice or something along the lines. And he was pretty attentive to that idea, too. So even though he is not on that particular committee, at least I don't think he is, he will have some connections there for. So he's aware of it. He's very, I thought he was very proud of what we had out there, Howard. I mean...
Oh, I, no question about that.
And to get people on your side in those positions down the road really going to help you.
He won't forget that visit for a little while. He had all the seagulls out, too, by the way.
Well, congratulations for getting him there to see it.
Yeah, he came in with the chamber.
Actually, kudos to Howard for that because I know he works really closely with staffer and, you know...
Kevin, I think Kevin is his third staffer that I've had out there. I'm not letting any of them get by without at least one trip to our landfill and try to give them an update on, you know, what concerns. Obviously, getting some of the commercial landfills to show some interest in this technology is a little more difficult than municipal landfills because they have to keep operation, operating. Commercial landfills, they just fill them up and walk away and you're left with a mountain of trash. So we have to incentivize them to, to maybe do something about that. And injecting septage and decaying it, breaking it down in a shorter period of time reduces their cost in terms of post-closure cost. So there are a lot of incentives to get them to do that. And one of the things I suggested was to give commercial landfills maybe a tax credit, double tax credit, if they institute that kind of technology. We'll see what happens. It was proposed twenty years ago, so it's not like it's a new idea because we don't need any more Mount Trashmores around the United States.
Okay, that's it for me on updates.
Okay, conceptual initiatives from administration?
None this evening.
No old business, new business. The Blue Water River Walk Coastal Wetlands Zone Management Grant for the boardwalk.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we send that grant onto the full board.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion on that grant? It's kind of neat. They upped it from fifty to a hundred thousand, so it should really be, I think, a huge asset to the end of the riverwalk down where we have the wetlands area, that they'll be able to go out and circle over that and actually be able to look in the wetlands without actually going in there. B, the Columbus Site Improvement Contract.
I need to take a vote on that last one.
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you. The Columbus Site Improvement Contract.
I would, I've got tremendous amount of questions on this, actually. Mark's not here tonight on this, so I would like to make a motion to table this, time being.
Support.
It's been moved and supported to table. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Maybe we suggest that somebody get ahold of Mark and let him know that we have all these, or a lot of questions. Come prepared to give us a good breakdown at the next meeting. Let him know it, so we just not caught off guard.
Okay, we have a US EDA Grant Agreement Economic Impact Study for the St. Clair Power Plant Closure for Final Action. See, David's here.
Actually, David and Dan, I'd make the motion.
I'll make a motion for final action.
I'll support it. Do you guys want to chime in on this at all? I think we've pretty well covered it.
First, I want to congratulate you on having such a great planning department. These guys have been awesome to work with and we look forward to working with them again on this project. The study that's being proposed is an economic impact analysis of the closure of the St. Clair Power Plant. So in that analysis, we're going to be looking at the impacts to the tax base that will be lost for all the taxing jurisdictions and we're going to be looking at the job losses and the impact of the local economy from that, specifically local businesses. That was the original intent of the study and then we were also going to look at some scenarios for future land use if that site were redeveloped. That was, that was the plan. Some recommendations, what can we do to offset those impacts? But now that we have word that another power plant is going to be built somewhere in close proximity to it, what we'd like to add to the study is a comparative analysis. So what that will do for us is that will allow us to determine what the negative impacts will be of the closure of one plant, offset by the positive impacts of the opening of the other plant, which will occur at approximately the same time. We still anticipate that there's going to be a negative impact overall and the reason, there's two reasons. The first, and the chair mentioned this a minute ago in his comments, coal-fired plants have a lot more employees than gas-fired plants. I think the number I've heard is about two-hundred-and-sixty people that work at the St. Clair plant are going to be reassigned essentially. Some of them will retire between now and then and they won't, those jobs may not be replaced. I've heard that gas-fired plants will employ approximately thirty to forty people for a plant that generates a thousand megawatts. So there's still a significant net job reduction, right? And secondly, the coal-fired plant is a larger facility than the gas-fired plant will be, so from the standpoint of taxes, there'll probably still be a net loss of some amount, but it may be offset by the age of the plant that's getting knocked down versus a brand-new plant. We don't know that, so that's the reason why we want to do a comparative analysis, so we can determine what, it could be that there'll be net no loss of taxes. We just don't know right now. So those are some additions to the study that we're going to be doing. Dave and myself have a call coming up with the EDA, so we're going to begin the process to go down that road and it'll take a few months to complete.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Any questions for Dan? None? It's fifty percent grant, fifty percent coming from DTE, nothing from the county, so roll call isn't necessary. All in, this is for final action?
Yeah.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Okay, the landfill materials procurement, Steve Hyde trucking.
Motion to send landfill's materials with Steve Hyde trucking onto the full board.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion on that? Seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. The landfill materials procurement from Burgess Contracting.
Mr. Chairman, I move that that contract be sent onto the full board.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. I would entertain a motion to receive and file the Smith Creek Landfill Activities Report.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any questions? Any items on it? Seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Any other environmental or public works matters? Seeing none. Information only. The public notice, the consent agreement and final order for Cargill Salt. I think we've been reading that in the paper. And the park and rec financial information. I would entertain a motion to receive and file.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Receive and file packet for environmental and public works matters.
So moved.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
We have a motion to adjourn at this time?
I'll move adjourn.
It's been moved and supported that we adjourn. So we are officially adjourned.
Thanks, guys.
At this time, I'd like to call the Ways and Means Committee to order. We have a roll call, please.
Mr. McConnell?
Here.
Mr. Tamian?
Here.
Mr. Heidemann?
Here.
Mr. Bowman?
Here.
Mr. Dunn?
Mr. Greathop?
Here.
Mr. Rushing?
Here. Do we have any additions, deletions or changes to the agenda? If not, I'd like to have a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
So moved. Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. This time, do we have any citizens wishing to be heard? Have any citizens? Seeing none, we'll move up to updates. Do we have any updates? We have none. Any conceptual initiatives? We have none. Moving on to new business. Seven A, city report here in local development finance authority, LVFA appointment.
Mr. Chairman, I move that Kerry's appointment be sent onto the full board.
Second, third.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Moving on to seven B, Affordable Care Act Reporting Agreement.
Chairman, I move that we send the Affordable Care Act Reporting Agreement onto the full board.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Moving on to seven C, Resolution sixteen dash twenty-six, authorizing limited tax refunding bonds communication system.
Move we send to the full board?
Support.
Any discussion?
What was the savings on that?
About seventy thousand dollars. We'll get the final amounts when the bonds are actually sold in about a month.
Those are 2020? Is that when those are up?
2024.
2024.
Yes. This was the oh-nine tower for the... Yes, this was the '09 ser, tower for the communication towers, this was the second series of bonds.
And then we have one that, that closes out in 2020.
Yeah, that was the '07.
Okay, this one's the one in Yale that we needed to do to really complete the system.
Okay.
Or K-PAC or wherever it is.
That's a $70,000 savings over the life of the bond. So, about 10,000 a year. Works for me.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. All right, we're moving on to other Ways and Means Matters. Do we have any? Seeing none? Can I have a motion for information, to receive and file information only? Retirement System Recommendation, the 2015 Actuary Evaluation Retirement System, and the 2015 Actuary Evaluation.
So moved.
Have a second.
I just want to make a comment on it. I know a handful of you got an opportunity to go to the actuarial reporting. Couple things that, one is they use the new life expectancy tables for those. Be quite honest, I thought when that went into play, it would really change our, our level of funding, much greater than it did. And it moved, I mean, literally, it was maybe a 1% or 2% kind of thing, you know, went from 88% to 86, went from 30 to, you know, 30 to, to whatever. So, I was expecting, you know, a whole lot, a whole lot more, because that's always kind of the old 800-pound grill in the room, that everybody was running on all the old assumptions, you know, for, for a long time, and this was going to hit. So, that was good. Pension, you know, we're still in really good shape, all things considered. The healthcare piece of it, it's going to be something that we're going to have to, you know, talk about in the, the near future. When I first became, you know, board chairman, it was the old five to seven years, you were done. And then we made some, some changes. We put a healthcare work group together, spent a lot of time with the retirees. There were 13 different meetings, two hours long. We do have, I think on November 3rd is going to be the retiree luncheon, that they have a schedule to go speak. I usually just go in and present that information to the retirees. Five or six years ago, it was, it was, you know, a Jeff Bone Pillow Party. They did not want to see me, and they weren't. But I, I can tell you that, I can at least go in there, present the information. From where we were last year, it was like the questions were, you know, it's, it, so the relationship, I think, on that end has become, hey, it's, as I always say, it's probably not what you want to hear, but I'm going to shoot you straight. And they appreciate that, you know, they really, at the end of the day, they do. So, I think the relationships there are, you know, much better than when, when the five or six years ago thing walking in. So, that's kind of, kind of where we're, kind of where we're at, so.
Mr. Chair, I, I'd just like to make one comment, and if you wouldn't mind, I'd like it recorded in the minutes, that at that meeting, I asked our consultants if an 8.5% return was too high in expectation to be using in our actuarial report. And the response I got from them, that it was at the lower end of...
Seven and a half on our...
Seven and a half.
Seven and a half.
Was it seven and a half?
Yeah, it was seven.
Which is still too high.
Yes, I, I still think it's too high, yes.
It's too high.
I, I was thinking it'd be more in the range of 5.5, but...
They're still using their, the averages over the years, and they're still remembering the 15 and 16% returns, coupled with your 6 and 5 and 4% stuff on your real low, and they're taking that average. And that's not there, and it's not going to be there. When we have all these countries with negative interest rates, three countries right now have negative interest rates, we're going to see a decline in that number. And they do not want to talk about it yet. I'd like to tie their fees based on that and tell them if they can't get us that kind of a return, we shouldn't be paying them as investment counselors. However, I don't think we would get anybody to work with us if we didn't. But you're right, that, that number's too high.
And, and really, they are not our investment advisors, they're the ones that are making the assumptions. And our investment advisors then are saying that they're...
That's their target.
That's their target.
I mean, I hope their target's there, but...
Yeah.
It's not going to be there.
Any further discussion?
Just a comment. Yeah, the changing the parameters for doing this have upset a lot of counties. When I was up at, at the Michigan Association Counties Conference, they were really complaining about the Michigan Employment Retirement System setting these new parameters and what it was doing with their actuary reports and where they were standing. I was kind of glad to hear Jeff say, you know, it had only minor impact on ours, because some of the counties, they were saying it was a major, major issue, and really upset them.
Well, what we've had, Howard, is a very conservative Republican base and all this.
Well, one thing I'll give...
Everybody's done a great job on this, starting with our chair, Jeff Bone.
One thing I'll give you guys a ton of credit for this board, and we're not afraid. I mean, if these issues come up, we know we got to address them, we know we got to talk about them, and we know we got to take action on them. And I hate to say, I've served on this board 12 years, Howard, and you and I'd been around, and maybe we were victims, you know, we were part of the deal, so I'm not going to point fingers, but the old proverbial kick the can down the road thing, you know, and waiting, you know, and I, you know, and it's just, when these issues come up, you can't do that. And, you know, we've taken these issues on and, and, you know, made decisions, move forward. So, I give credit to the, to the rest of the, the board members here.
And it hasn't been smooth. When we started off, it was just one retirement fund. And then they said, well, you can't have just one retirement fund, you have to split them, having the, you know, the fund that, that pays for...
For the medical and mental health.
Yeah, for, well, no, the fund for your monthly payments, you know, to the retiree, and the fund for benefits, and they have to be split. Then they waited a little while and said, oh, by the way, you have to include that on your financial reports yearly and indicate if there's any loss or any shortage, you know, in what it is. Forgot what that's called in our budget.
Our, our unfunded OPEB liability?
Yeah, unfunded liabilities, so.
Kerry ran this for me last year, and it was very helpful. It's like third grade stuff, right? So, I had her run the projections pre the world falling apart, and I said, give us a 7.5 projection, you know, 7.5% is the, you know, actuariales were and stuff, what that number would have been, okay? And because a lot of times, I've gone to these different things, and people say, oh, you're not funding your retirement system, you're not doing this. Remember in '07, we got beat for what, 33% of our total, total value? So, not only did you lose that much money, you still didn't get those gains. So, you put that little sheet together for me, and I used that last year in my presentation to the retirees, because it's one of the things that they always, they always hit me on. I said, now granted, I'll take the blame for a lot of stuff, but I'm not taking the blame for the world falling apart, okay? We'll start with that. But pre the world falling apart, if it wouldn't have happened, if you ran those projections based on the 7.5s, we would have been 100% in our, you know, retirement, we would have been 70%, right? So, we were doing, now what that tells you is we were doing the right things, you know, all along, up till pre, you know, well, some people can argue with it, but we were still on the right track, you know? And then it just took such a massive hit to try to make that back up. So, when you project it out like that, you know, I, now, now we're dealing with, you know, the aftermath of all the other stuff. So, because that, that was always one of those things came up, that you guys haven't put money into this. You're like, no, we just, we got, us and the rest of the world got slaughtered on this deal, you know? So...
We've taken a, very, at St. Clair County, a very positive in addressing this, starting with, I guess you could include Bill Kaufman in this, with his, and now Kerry, and giving us direction in the retirees. The whole county as a whole has made this thing successful, and we're in very sound shape for the future.
Certainly, anyone that's retired on a pension can feel fairly comfortable where we are with that fund. And then the benefit fund, obviously, is going to continue to need closer observation going forwards.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. All right, can I have a motion to receive and file packets?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. I now need to have a motion go into closed session?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn and go into closed session. At the end of that, we adjourn the meeting.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Do we need a roll call?
Yeah, roll call.
We, we need a roll call vote on that.
Close session?
We can, it's fine.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Tamian?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Bone?
Yes.
Commissioner Graytop?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes. Do we have to, another question. Do we have to designate a reason for this?
I will. I always do in the motions.
Okay. Do we need to tell the public?
It is on the agenda, but yes.
Pay raise for Howard?
Yes, there you go.
It is for the purchase of property, or potential purchase of property.